Dean Edward.
Here.
Chris Bessett.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mike Dunton. Rick Deacon.
Here.
Zach Gray.
Here.
Evelyn Bullock.
Thank you. With that, I'll turn that over to Mr. Davis.
Uh, Jeff Shaw, this time I will call the recess meeting. And Board of Commissioners from uh number seven back to order. We have all the board of commissioners present.
Thank you, sir. Let me just say welcome to our county commissioners. It's great to be with you. Um, for this joint session, they talk about the state of our schools and our county, what's going on with it. We're proud and honored to share with you the great teams that we've got here, who have been working for side most county private schools. And as long as the support you guys has generous, generally helped us over this past year. We look forward to doing great, many more great things in the nature. At this point, we could one time in the juncture, I'm gonna ask Dr. Ellis, if he will give us a thanks, please?
Good evening, sir. First of all, welcome to commissioners to Nash Central High School. All by education, which is in schools. I want to get into logistics. I just want to thank commissioners for that report. Sometimes you don't know much of money better, but tonight you're gonna see. What the local funding looks like, Nash County Public Schools. And we just want to thank you for being there for us and your dedication to our students.
Tonight, you're gonna have a folder that's sitting, it's a yellow folder. It's gonna contain the slideshow and some other documents concerning some questions that were given. I'll talk about those questions and the other documents later, but first we're gonna get into the PowerPoint. The agenda tonight. As you're gonna see, we're gonna talk about current conditions. Parkments will come up here and speak about current conditions and then moving forward and looking forward. We're gonna have a conversation around J R T C. Shaw will be speaking to that. And then there is a question about divergent timeline, which you will also be discussing. So this time, Ms. Wallace.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So this evening, I will talk to you addressing some of the questions that you have regarding supplements, recruitment bonuses, and next steps for local salary set scale for classified employees. So beginning with the supplements. This is where we are currently. In local supplement payout, we're at four point seven million dollars. And in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we were at four point three million dollars. The state's additional supplement payout for this current year is approximately one point three million. And last year, it was two point three million. So you can see the differences there in terms of the payout amounts for local and what the state will allocate this year as well. Local is paid on a monthly basis, but the state payout is on an annual basis for all of our support staff in terms of our teachers as well of our support curriculum staff members. For the next slide, this just gives you an average local teacher supplemental amount, and it's a comparison for some of our surrounding districts. Some districts give you more details than others, and that's why you can see the breakdown on a few of them. For Wake County Public Schools, their supplement payout for teachers is twenty point four percent to twenty-six point two percent. For Johnston County Schools, their payout is eleven point five percent to fourteen point five percent. And you can see that the payout amount is tiered based on the years of service that an employee has. For Nash County Public Schools, the teacher's salary supplement payout is eleven point, eleven percent to twelve point five percent. And it's based on your level of degree. And for Wilson County Schools, regardless of your years of service or the degree level that you have, is strictly at eight percent. So for the recruitment bonus payout, in twenty-one, twenty-two school year, we paid approximately two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And that amount was varied based on the positions held and the needs of the school. We do have recruitment efforts and needs, and they begin with the hard-to-fill positions. That's right. Yeah. We have elementary, E C, middle school, E C, math and science levels, high school, E C, math and science levels, instructional assistant, E Cs and regular, regular T As, pre-K teachers and bus drivers. The requirements, this does apply to all full-time and part-time positions. However, it is prorated the amount that they receive based on their terms of employment. And in order to receive the recruitment bonus, they must remain in the district for the entire school year. Additional recruitment efforts and needs. We do have a challenge when it comes to staffing, fully staffing our low-performance schools at a hundred percent. So we looked at the schools that are in a lowest five percent, and that's the performance basis, and that comes from the state, and it is tiered. And we do all that we can to provide quality staffing for those schools. They get an additional recruitment bonus if they were to go and teach in one of those schools. And we looked at schools that have numerous vacancies, and those are the schools that had more than five certified positions that were vacant, especially those in the testing areas. Recruitment payout, I'm sorry, retention payout, that was approximately eight hundred thousand. And what we did in order to afford that amount, we received the CARES grant, which is the first S A grant that we received. They allowed us to use the remaining funding in that grant to take care of bonus efforts. So I go back to Mr. Outlaw. He always says, what do we do for the teachers that are here and doing everything that they can and remain with us? Every employee classified and certified that stayed with us during the year did receive a one-time payout of seven hundred and fifty dollars. These are some next steps and things to think about that will probably come up later, and you'll get additional information about this as well as we learn more. As an attempt of the state to level the playing field, in terms of salaries for classified employees, the state is recommending approval. Can't say that it will happen right away, but they are paying close attention to the inequity of the salaries for classified employees. So they want to make sure that we're meeting legislative requirements. They also want to make sure that we're providing flexibility for local education agencies to establish competitive local pay scales. They want to simplify and combine the pay ranges for levels within a position as classified. Expand the pay ranges to allow the local boards of education to establish pay scales that meets the needs for their specific employment markets. And they also want to align the state board education salary policy to the office of state of human resources pay ranges and job descriptions where possible to create greater efficiencies and comparability. That was updated July one, twenty-twenty-two. So in summary, what this says is, we are meeting the fifteen dollar minimum for all of our classified employees. But because of the pay scale and we don't have a lot of flexibility in the pay scales, if I'm an employee that have worked in the district for ten years, I get paid fifteen dollars an hour. If I just am hired in the district as a classified employee, I make fifteen dollars an hour. So it's not leveling the playing field for all of the employees that have been here for many years. And that's the way the state scale has been designed. We don't do steps. It is out there for you when it comes to my years of service when I'm hired. But once you're hired, you're locked in at that rate unless you're promoted or leave and return to the district. So many of our surrounding districts offer a local salary pay scale, which is a step scale for employees in classified roles so that they have a more competitive salary. Local funds may supplement the pay ranges, and LEAs may approve local schedules, differentiating years of experience and education. This does align with the North Carolina O S H R salary ranges and provides rider ranges to create more flexibility. The last slide that I do have for you is. A district has been able to repurpose funds to assist clerical classified staff. However, we have much work to do in creating a local salary step scale for other classified employees. We have outlined here for you an increase, a potential increase for bus drivers, bus monitors, and teacher assistants. These amounts at the bottom are not right. I don't know what happened with that slide, but I can tell you, if you have a pen, I'm gonna give you the accurate amount of what it totals up to, and we will revise this and get you the corrected slide. So for one percent increase for bus drivers per year, it would be approximately eight thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. For bus monitors, approximately eight thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. For teacher assistants, approximately forty-seven thousand forty dollars and seventy-eight cents, which is a grand total annually of sixty-three thousand eight ten seventy-eight. If we were to look at a one point five percent increase for bus drivers, it would be twelve thousand nine hundred thirty dollars. For bus monitors, twelve thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars. And for teacher assistants, seventy thousand five hundred sixty-one dollars nineteen cents. That would be a grand total annually of ninety-five thousand seven sixteen nineteen. If we were to entertain a two percent increase for bus drivers, that would be seventeen thousand two hundred and forty dollars. Bus monitors, sixteen thousand three hundred dollars. Teacher assistants, ninety-four thousand eighty-one and fifty-eight cents, which is a grand total annually of one hundred twenty-seven thousand six hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents. Okay, capital.
Ms. Wallace might be leaving. So Ms. Wallace, do you want to answer one of your questions? I know that you have to catch a train, so I didn't want to lose you while you were up. We'll hold off.
Yes, sir.
Any commissioners got any questions on that presentation there? Mr. Bellfield.
Would you be able to?
Yes, sir. And I gave you that. If you go back to, I don't have the number. Right. Right here is the amount that they are giving. Last year they gave that amount. That is at least one percent. I am not. I just wanted you to see where it was, but no, I know we can't compete real quick.
Other questions from commissioners?
Yes, sir.
That slide you showed us with the three positions, the one, one and a half, and two percent.
Yes, sir.
Is that an ask, one of those particular?
I believe eventually it will become an ask, but it really depends on, it's a need. But we're really trying to follow the new legislative of them trying to get the approval for us to create and be more competitive with local salary scales.
Will that be an ask this year?
That's really a Dr. Ellis' question.
I know bus drivers, you've got a pretty significant issue with bus drivers.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Outlaw, I think that's, as you're aware of, that's not only issue locally, but that's across state. We, yeah, we had, we were at a conference in last week, and every district in this state is wrong with that as well as some other things. So it is a, and of course with the private sector, getting wanted drivers as well, it makes it doubly competitive. So I, I know, thank you, sir.
Other commissioners? Yes, sir, Mr. Bellfield.
Yes, there are challenges. We have partnered with more contracting companies for visiting international faculties. So we're recruiting for a lot of teachers that are actually from other countries. In terms of us recruiting locally, that too has been a challenge. And when you look at salaries that are in surrounding districts, some of the supplement that we have talked about, it makes it even more challenging for us to recruit quality teachers. Yes, we have them leaving, going to many different sectors. Uh, we do have a lot that's exited in a profession. We have a tier group that is retiring, and we have some that are going to other LEAs.
What was that last name, Mr. Bellfield? Sure.
How many teacher assistants do we have?
Right now, about one twenty-three, but we have about thirty-one vacancies.
Would that two percent make it such that you would be able to? How would that put us in comparison to the county around us?
So. I can tell you of weight their bus drivers make, about eighteen dollars an hour. I can't speak to that for the other ones, but we can investigate that and inquire based on a salary scale.
Would that two percent put you at fifteen?
They're at fifteen.
They are, so that.
They're at fifteen. Everybody's at fifteen.
Well, I don't think anybody's gonna ride to Wake County for.
No. But Wake County, Wake County does pay a recruitment bonus as well, which we are competitive with them in recruiting, but they have a challenge, is probably more challenges than we are in terms of bus drivers because they're so much larger. But we do have quite a bit of T As that leave and go to Amazon. They can make twenty dollars an hour. Walmart, different places like that are paying about eighteen dollars an hour. And we do hear from them in terms of their exit surveys about why they're leaving, and a lot of it is salary.
Well, it doesn't seem to me, I mean, it's a lot of money to me, but in the big picture, two percent doesn't seem like a lot of money if the payback is retention of the people you've got, and we need to keep those people.
Yes, sir.
And we definitely, all three of those positions are very important.
Yes, sir.
Just, Ms. Wallace, on the TA situation though, some of that has to do with certification. They're asking them to give more. They have an education requirement. There's a lot of other things, because I started as a TA. And now there's two-year degrees, so many years of community coming. I think that's what's hurting the TA conversation as well. Pre-K has more. Demands now on certification, things of that nature. You're talking about a TA position, so I think that's what's changed too.
Yes.
Other question from commissioners? I had three, and I'll do them real quick.
Okay.
Ms. Wallace, uh, the item four, you talked about recruitment bonuses and retention bonuses. Where did that money come from that you told you to do that with? And my real question is, is it reoccurring money?
The recruitment bonus money, we repurposed, repurposed some funding based on lap salaries and things like that so that we could accrue that amount so that we could offer recruitment. Retention came from CARES One funding. That is not a recurring amount. And we did request last year for additional funding so that we could offer that again this year.
You asked.
Last year at the county commissioners meeting, the joint meeting.
Okay. And the recruitment bonus, I guess you always got lap salaries, so that's your, y'all's decision whether to do that again or not.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we are offering it this year as well.
Okay. Other thing, uh, to help clear up, a couple of questions I've been asked by commissioners. Maybe directed to you, Dr. Ellis. The offer of the county board gave you forty-one percent supplement that, uh, we were talking about it being a two percent, what a max from the school board. And if I understand right, you were able to use the money that you got from the state to do that max. So are you using our money presently for supplements?
Correct. You, uh, commissioners put in one percent. We were allotted the one percent from the states. That's how we got the two percent issue.
Okay. And that state is expected to be reoccurring as well? We believe that it will be.
Right now, it is.
Right now, it is.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. That's my question. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Talk to start with a little bit about capital outlay projects, some of the extra funding that we have going on at this time, most of it since the fiscal year began. I could, if you guys can hear me, it'd be better if I stand up here. Can you guys hear me? This year is every funding as you can see, this is the two hundred wing, Southern Nash Middle Schools. That will look to where, but you can see the existing over windows, people that were replaced, we completed the cafeteria. One hundred, three hundred, four hundred windows on that campus. It's an incentive, it's a value contract. In conjunction with, and seeing the lighting and all the heat and air systems throughout the campus, it's totally, this campus facing is totally renovated from a window and mechanical standpoint. This here is Springfield Elementary. You can see here, the autophoreum windows. One thing we do have to go back and do, we're currently starting to paint this campus. If you can see back here, it's a teal green campus. This is a before picture. This is the after picture, but we are coming back and changing the bronze tones of the teal kind of matches and that stand out so much. But that's new windows in the autophoreum building. Again, this was with, with extra funding. Edwards Middle Schools, another school we've been spending a lot of money on. You can see here, this campus is totally completed with windows. The entire campus has been totally renovated. About one point seven million dollar expenditure. Uh, you can see here, the V R F system. Uh, this is about a year and a half project. We're moving the kids from one wing to another. We've completed seven hundred wing. We just completed the admin this summer. And completing final inspections on the nine hundred wings hopefully tomorrow and moving the kids back in. As you can see right here at the nine hundred wing, you really be lighting on the heat and air, these are spending ceilings. See this next picture here, this was classrooms and basically the way ceilings looked in the classrooms. Now you see the new heating and air, you got the new windows and suspended ceilings installed. We, we kind of did this in conjunction with contractors, uh, my staff as well as contractors. This is something that was brought up at the last joint meeting. These were multi-purpose rooms. We're going around to all of the, the older multi-purpose rooms, pulling out the old asbestos floor tile, putting in a solid floor. See, I'll see a seam floor between, uh, logos inside the gym. This is Bachelor Field. This is D S Johnson. Got this other slide of St. Louis Elementary on the bottom. This here is Northern Nash Tennis Court. We ran into a situation here where the courts basically fell. We had a hundred, roughly a hundred twenty thousand dollar athletic grants from the state. I put some, uh, capital funding with it. We came in, uh, my staff took all the fencing down. We painted it, painted all the holes. And we installed the new, all the new fabric. So basically on the right, now the courts are totally finished now, the right picture before we painted the line and installed the net. Second this week, those tennis courts are all basically back, uh, be ready for spring season. This is the new child nutrition warehouse. We're relocating, relocating it hopefully after the first of the year. As you can see, we've got coolers, one of the coolers in the, uh, on the far right, we've got two big deep fridges. They haven't been installed yet. They are hopefully in the next two weeks be installed. Uh, this will house all the child nutrition, uh, the, the, not the cold foods in the warehouse, but they'll house this and send it out to school. We're also putting in a, uh, generator. So if we ever have any issues, we can make sure that we don't have problems or issues. Now, Red Oak Elementary. As you can see, I'm just going back from when we first started. We've got the middle school behind us. This is the elementary school. Layout, this is the floor plan. And I'll tell you now, this is the section we're really working on now. This is the K two wing, which is currently housing the older, uh, the, the K two kids in the old building. This is the second, third, fourth fence tied into the gymnasium. Admin area, media center, dining room, kitchen. This is the front entrance where you'll be buzzed into the school. You got two doors, basically a vegetable where you can come in and then you'll be buzzed in to the main office. This is the restrooms, gang restrooms, basically at the main corridor. That's the boys restroom. This is the girls restroom. Basically inside, it's much more finished now. We've got suspended ceilings installed. This is the tile fixtures are gonna be installed shortly. Again, this is the gymnasium. We will have new doors, basically working from the K two wing. They'll be finishing up with the gymnasium. This is work on the inside of the gymnasium. You'll see the new windows. This is the new paint colors, paint schemes. It's the, the red, the blue, and the Northern Nash gold. Glitzers are installed, and we basically painted the gym, the floor. Now sanding the covers. As you can see here, this is all furniture waiting to go into. Put the material on a desk and stuff together, so once we get a CO, we can move. Northern Nash Fieldhouse. Again, we're still trying to secure funding with that, hopefully with, with a grant, with some deferred capital funds. We're slowly making our way to being able to secure the funding. Again, when we did the project, we came in about a million five, a million seven over budget, so we're sitting tight. Hopefully, when we secure funding, the contract, and we're hoping we'll, we'll hold this bid. If not, we'll have to go back and be in on this project. But we're hoping to secure these pretty quick so we can move forward. Topless progress. We just completed the sale of Rock Mountain Baseball Stadium. We received a hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Waiting on closing on that, hopefully in the next thirty days. That will be off our books totally. Bradley Elementary School. Actually, we'll run in the paper tomorrow. So we will start the up to bid process, uh, pretty quick. Hope it goes quite a few rounds, more rounds, more money we get. That bid does start at a hundred fifty thousand, so. Next campus that I'll be bringing to the board at some point early two thousand twenty-three will be the W O Green Campus. We're using that campus currently for storage. We do have records in one of the buildings. That we relocate at some point early two thousand twenty-three. Hopefully we'll bring that, bring that building to the board. And of course, we've got Sigler Grove and Swift Creek. Uh, once we finish the Red Oak project, we can get out or relocate. All the kids from Sigler Grove and Swift Creek, and then we'll be bringing those two campuses to the board, resolution.
Shannon, while you're on that slide, the Bradley Elementary upset bid process, you say starts. Tomorrow.
It will run in the paper tomorrow. We run it one day.
My question is, did it get offered to Rocky Mountain City Council because it's in the city and they turned it down?
I had a conversation with the interim city manager who had a conversation and declined. Whether or not they jump in at some point in the near future. May or may not be a possibility. There has been some minor conversation since the decline. But we had already proceeded and we catered up with approval. And.
But the statute that requires you to offer it to the local entity has been fulfilled. And it would have been Rocky Mountain because it's located in Rocky Mountain.
No, sir. Uh, we do, we do not have to offer that to the city of Rocky Mountain. We did that out of, out of curiosity.
Okay. Is it not something that requires you to offer to a local entity or am I remembering that wrong?
No, sir. It was offered to Nash County Commissioners. arrived for confusion and then we.
So I have forgotten that it came to the commissioners. Is that what you're saying?
I'm assuming it, yes, sir.
Do you know when that happened? Because we all seem to not remember, maybe. Uh. Let me say, we're, we're gathering candles quickly on our board, uh, so couldn't we have done it? Or can you? Just verify that it has been done and. Maybe have a superintendent let the manager know. That, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Uh, next slide, the school capacity ADM. Got these broken down basically in, in areas, especially the southern, and I call it fifty-eight section with elementary schools. Bailey Elementary. Uh, these are current ten-day ADM numbers from, from this year. And, and one thing I will say, if you look at capacity numbers, these were capacities at ADM numbers at times of school. So where they changed, where the Red Oak Elementary Campus. Has ADM numbers where they currently are when they drop the K three class sizes. This is not a true reflection of, of the numbers and how many classrooms we may have in a field. That makes sense.
Could, could you say it again? I didn't quite follow it.
When we built Bailey Elementary, let's just take that in consideration. You got six hundred sixty-four. That was based on number of classrooms, class size state mandated at the time we built.
Built the school, okay.
Whereas we mandated, I'm not sure, the last couple, three years, we dropped all the class sizes.
Right.
Which this number is skewed.
Okay.
But you Red Oak Elementary is not. They were based on the UGAD.
Okay, I, I called it that, uh.
So right now currently. Bailey's five forty with a, with a past year six sixty-four. Middlesex three thirty-six, four eighteen capacity. Springville Elementary has a current three seventy with five forty-two. You'll see Coopers is sitting right at capacity as we speak, Nashville Elementary. Sigler Grove, again, one we're closing. I've got all three of those. Over is at four oh seven and five twelve. Where we add existing numbers. This is to be Red Oak Campus. We combined with an eight twenty-one. So right now we're sitting pretty good, even though there's some development going on. In that area. This is Winston Avenue, what I call the big three area in Wilford. Five thirty-five and six twenty-five. You'll notice Eaglewood, it's five fifty-five and five oh lake. But keep in mind, that's a three-five campus. So the, we can stack more kids in those classrooms than we can to catch to Winston. So Benwood use five seventy-eight, six sixty-eight. Wilford force two twenty-six and five eighty-one, which that's three K campus, take two kids.
Could you find something that sounds better than stack those kids?
Some of them probably are stacked. Johnson Elementary Fairview, this is Edco School, three forty-eight, five seventy-five. Two sixty-six and four twenty-five. And Bachelor Field three ten, four twenty-seven. That moves to three of middle schools, uh, Southern Nash Middle, eight oh two and eight fifty. So we're getting relatively close to capacity there. National from Middle to five oh three and six seventy. And Red Oak Middle made ten and eight fifty. So we are getting close to capacity. On that campus as well. Edwards Middle, four oh seven, eight twenty-seven. Rocky Mountain Middle, four hundred seven fifty. Harper Middle, two fifty, five fifty-seven. Southern Nash High School. Thousand eighty-five. Thousand sixty-eight capacity. That's with the nine twenty, eleven fifty. Northern thousand sixty and eleven fifty. Rocky Mountain five, thousand seventy-nine and thirteen nine. Early College, current is three eighty-eight, capacity of five hundred. City High, which is on the Rocky Mountain Middle Campus, one fifteen, with a capacity of five hundred. Tar River Academy, seventy-four. Capacity of a hundred. And Nada, which is on the Wilford Campus, which made those numbers look narrower, occupied at four hundred wing. Uh, with a capacity of five hundred. Any questions now?
Any question from commissioners must be up here.
And looking at. Average daily attendance there. This is nothing that came from school system, but I heard. That you're looking at building a new. Middle school in the southern part of the county.
There, there has been a grant applied for, I think Nash County applied for it, uh, last year, this year as well. Did not receive the grants, the word I received. Uh, for, for possible new, a, a middle school at southern end of the county.
Yeah, uh, the middle school that's in that area now.
We, we could, you know, there are several options. One, one of the, one of the options would be to maybe repurpose that campus for an elementary. And, and stop some of the overcrowding that would, would come to, come to pass at. The Middlesex, the Bailey, the Spring Hope, the Coopers, the Nashville, depending upon how our board proceeds down the road. That's, this is just an option that at some point we'll present.
Other questions on those slides? What's those? It, it just seems obvious that at some point. With where you got your, some schools full, some schools, quite a few empty spaces that. We're gonna have to look at, or the school board is gonna have to look. At the whole district as far as reassigning school districts. So I guess. We all realize that's coming at some point, particularly with, with the high school, but it looks like all across the board really. But, but what does that look like to have to do? Is that something? We work together to do it all at one time? Do we do it in pieces? Or how are we thinking along that? I think we all in the room realize it's coming.
One thing I'll stand up for on my side of the county, from my district is, you already see the high school is exceeding capacity.
Yes.
And I'm not so extremely positive, but there's still a virtual academy that's going on, right?
Correct.
And so if that virtual academy was to extinguish, that puts more people back into the schools. So those numbers would fluctuate there. But as you can see, between that and the development that's going on, on the southern part of the county, I'm gonna need some help down there soon.
Let me, let me just address that question. I think we're sort of, while we have to address it, we, we don't necessarily want to jump into that. We don't want to put the cart before the horse. We want to do our, do our due diligence to see what, what needs to be done. So I don't think Shannon or Dr. Ellis, you can address this in a position that should talk to that issue right now.
I, 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 I realize we don't, we don't have details, but it, my, my point is that you can see it's coming.
We, yeah, we, we, we looked at it and our board will sit together. When we see that, we'll sit together and do an assessment with the superintendent and we'll determine what direction we go in.
Other questions, comments from commissioners?
So I stand before you this evening to talk to you about school safety and some, and our SROs. So currently in our schools, what we have in terms of school safety is we have eleven full-time SROs. And this one include, we have seven high schools. This includes SROs at six of those high schools. With the exception of Nash, Rocky Mountain, Early College, which the college provides security for, um, our early college high school. We have six SROs at our middle schools. And I would like to say on the campus of Rocky Mountain Middle School, where City High and Rocky Mountain Middle School sit in the same building. There's one SRO that, uh, patrols that campus. And then we have Tar River Academy, which sits on the same campus that has. An SRO as well. So there's two SROs that's on that one campus. We have security cameras that's in all of our schools, internal and external. Um, in the past years, our high schools ha- have, uh, really had the. I would say the vast amount of cameras within those buildings. Uh, what we have been working on over the past several years, couple of years actually, is trying to get more cameras inside of our elementary and middle schools. And we started on that, um, I believe Mr. McQueen was a year or two years ago. And, um, hopefully by the end of this fall, we're coming up on the beginning of this spring, we'll, we'll have all the cameras that we have purchased. Um, in our middle and elementary schools on the inside, the internal part of the building. Because one of the things that.
Anybody monitor those cameras constantly?
There's no one monitoring the cameras constantly. Um, because we, unfortunately, we do not have the human capital to, to do that. But what it provides for us is if something happens. Um, we have the ability to go back and, um, use those cameras to try to find out what happened at that point.
Safety, uh, be one of the top priority.
Absolutely it is. Door badges. At all of our schools and our auxiliary buildings. We have controlled access where you have to be buzzed into, um, our buildings. The, we also, the expectation has been sent out to all of our schools and auxiliary buildings that. All doors should remain locked at all time. That doors should not be propped open. Um, one of the things that the, uh, state of North Carolina did. Want to say, starting back in June or July, was they asked all law enforcement agencies. To work with schools by just riding through campuses, doing a check, um, of doors and make sure that all doors were locked and not propped open. Um, going into those schools, visiting with principals. Um, just to let them know if they're finding anything or see anything on the outside of their campuses. Um, we have had law enforcement agencies throughout this area who have been going to our schools doing that. So. That has been a help and it helps reinforce the message that it's important that doors remain locked and not propped open at all times. Thank you, Mr. McQueen. We also will begin in December, uh, random, a random winding protocol for high schools. Uh, this would be random winding of, uh, walkers, car riders, bus riders. Um, schools with, those high schools will also have the option of, if they do not want to wind, they can randomly have them walk through the metal detectors that we have. Um, there's some more conversation that we have to have around that with our high schools. Um, but the. Uh, what we are hoping to have is at least one time a week, four times a month. Um, that this is happening on our high school campuses. Schools certainly have the option to do more if they choose to. But we are asking at least four times a month, once a week. We also have what we call a threat or risk assessment protocol. And that is for students who have threatened harm to themselves or others. Um, this is something that the state of North Carolina as well has been pushing that all schools have in place. We have been doing this threat assessment protocol now since I want to say around two thousand fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, even before it was mandated by the state. Um, and so if we have a student who threatens to harm themselves or others. Um, they have to be two adults who are either a counselor. Um, a school social worker, school nurse or psychologist. Who goes in with that student and there's a set protocol in terms of questions. Um, that are asked and then, um, based on how the student responds to those questions. It is determined whether it's low, medium or high. And then based on that, if we believe that it's high, it's something that, um, a, a parent needs to take the child to. Um, a medical office to have a, a threat assessment done outside of what we have done, because our assessment is really more of a risk assessment than it is a threat assessment. Then what we say to the parent is that we suggest that you take your child to have a threat assessment done by a medical official. Um, and then sometimes we make it mandatory before the child can, um, return to school. Because we don't want any child, um, hurting themselves and we certainly don't want any child, um, coming back to school to hurt others. So we applied for the SRO grant. And, uh. The amount of money that we asked for in that grant was about, I want to say six hundred sixteen thousand dollars, which would. Cover eight elementary SROs and eight middle school SROs. And because we are Lowell School District. It was a four-to-one match. And so we were awarded the grant. Uh, we have not received the money at this time, but we did receive the grant. And with that four-to-one match, what the state says is that we will give you fifty-five thousand dollars per SRO. Um, that you've asked for, the elementary and middle schools. So the grant pays forty-four thousand dollars and then the district would be expected to pay eleven thousand dollars. So for example, if we hired an SRO at an elementary or middle school and their total cost was sixty-eight thousand. Forty-four thousand would come from the grant and the district would be expected to take care of the twenty-four thousand. So I want to talk just a little more about the elementary funding for the SROs. So this grant is for two schools, two school years, the twenty-two, twenty-three and the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Again, it's a one, a four-to-one match. Forty-four thousand dollars coming from the state or the grant, and then the rest coming from the school district. What we have asked for was funding for eight SROs to cover our sixteen elementary schools. So what that would mean is that those SROs would. One officer would have two schools. So in the morning, they would be at one school and then in afternoon, they would be at another school. One officer would have two schools. So in the morning, they would be at one school and then in afternoon, they would be at another school. The total cost in terms, well, not the total cost, but using the, the grant funding of the four to one with forty-four thousand times eight. Gives us three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. So the estimated cost for our elementary SROs is around five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And this is based on what SROs cost us last school year. So the cost that would remain for the district for elementary SROs alone would be approximately one hundred seventy-three thousand dollars. And again, this is what we were looking at based on what we spent on SROs last year. And talking about specifically eight SROs for elementary schools. SRO grant funding for middle schools. Again, this is a two-year grant. Again, the four to one match. We have six middle schools, so six middle school SROs times that forty-four gives us two sixty-four. Our current cost for middle schools based on last year's numbers about three hundred and seventy-six thousand. So our cost or the district's cost for middle school SROs this year would be approximately a hundred twelve thousand dollars. So funding for our high school SROs. For the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, for the first time, the state has specifically allocated funding. For high school SROs and they allocate, allocated funding in the amount of fifty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. Per high school SRO. So we have a total of six high schools excluding Nash Rock and Mount Early College. So that's six times fifty-eight thousand four hundred eighty gives us a cost of three hundred fifty thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars paid by the state. Our current cost for high school SROs is about three hundred fifty-five thousand nine hundred thirty-three dollars. This again was based on last year's number. So the cost to the districts for high school SROs would be approximately five thousand dollars. So SRO funding that is not covered by the grant. Or monies specifically allocate, allocated for high school SROs will come from our state oh sixty-nine, which is. An at-risk funding or at-risk allotment. So paid from oh sixty-nine during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year was approximately seven hundred thirty-three thousand dollars for SROs. The estimated cost fro- from oh sixty-nine during the twenty-two, twenty-three school year would be approximately two hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. Saving the district approximately four hundred forty-two thousand dollars. Without the specified high school SRO money, the grant funding for the six middle schools, six high school SROs. I mean, excuse me, six middle school, eight elementary SROs. From oh sixty-nine this year, we would have paid one million two hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars. Any questions for me? Yes, ma'am.
Go back to the, um, school safety. I have a concern because how are you all going to choose, it's random students, but how do we ensure that some students are profiled? And I know many times that administrators and teachers know who the problem. Students are, but how do, how are you, how are you gonna ensure that they are not profiled by race or ethnicity?
So what we have asked, what we will ask schools to do is that first of all, whenever they do a random winding. They would, if they do on the bus, they would have to put which bus they random profile. So we would know that on. December fifteenth at Rocky Mountain High School, bus three fifty-two, bus two eleven, the bus one ninety. Were the three buses that were randomly chosen. So if we go back to January and another winding day and we see that those three buses or two of those buses. Have come up and we know Rocky Mountain High School campus have eighteen buses on it, then we know that's not random, that they need to be. More random and they have to turn that information into us. For students who are riding their cars, it's gonna be a little more difficult. What we have done in the past is we said, every ten cars that pull up. So this first car would be the first car that I pull. Ten cars after that, then I pull another student. Ten cars after that, I pull another student. And what, we're not asking the schools to try to do fifty or a hundred kids who are riding in a car. Because again, you're, you're fighting against trying to get kids out of the cars in the schools and get school started. But to pull enough students so that. We are making sure that it is a, a random process. For those students in high school who drive the school, again, it would be the same thing. It would either be every ten students who are driving, every five stu- whatever it is that the school decides on. When they give us a report, they would have to show us in that report how that process was ran.
In connection with student safety. Beginning to escalate people with mental problems here in the United States. Unsafe situations. You're addressing mental health along with your safety.
Yes, sir. We have a school-based mental health program in every one of our schools, from elementary to high. I think there's, there's four or five different mental health agencies who are working with our schools to fulfill this school-based mental health program. We also have a socio-emotional learning curriculum for our middle and high schools. We've worked hard with. Curriculum and instruction team to try to make sure that SEL is built into the curriculum. So that it's not something else that teachers are doing, but it's built into our curriculum. And the, and the SEL is really about checkpoints for students. To see where they are throughout the day, to see if there are any issues that are stemming that. We might can intervene, I get ahead of. We have along the lines of the mental health piece, we have twelve social workers throughout the district to also help. Provide services or help families get the services that they may need. We have twenty school nurses throughout our school district. Each school has accounts, at least one counselor. So we have tried to cover the gamut as best we can and ensuring that personnel. Is in each school to try to provide services for kids as needed.
Those that are being bullied are comfortable in that administration of, of the school. Nor the teachers. Sometime to get over the hook and something as a result of it. Defend themselves, they end up with a weapon.
Yes, sir. We have a bullying protocol. That is aligned to our Board of Education policy and aligned to state and federal guidelines as it relates to bullying, harassing behavior. Our principals and assistant principals and teachers know that if a student or a parent. Says that a child is being bullied, the parent doesn't have to put it in writing. We asked them to so we can have the, as, has it as documentation, but even if they don't put it in writing. Our principals, assistant principals know that there's a protocol that they're supposed to go through to investigate that situation. Sometimes it's informal, but most often it's a formal process.
Dr. Pharaoh, let me just touch on what Mr. Bill Phil just said, because basically, that's a great question as far as we know, the mental, the mental health issue. Is not a locus across the state, across the nation. One of the things we went through last week in the. State School War Association Conference was mental health. They focus a whole lot on that. One of the things that, there was a pro- couple of programs that talked to that issue. And one of the things that was discussed and I shared with what Dr. Pharaoh is doing with the team here and they were so amazed. They came back, one of the leaders for the state came back with me when we came back. We had a sit-down conference with Dr. Pharaoh with what Nash County was doing with mental health. And this calls where you guys are leading the ears, we like to use what you're doing across the state to pilot some other areas. We started this program probably about three or four years ago.
Yes, sir.
And right now it's paying off. We're seeing fruits of the labor and not only is it paying off in Nash County, but it's also being recognized across the state.
Other questions?
Yeah, I just clarify a few things. FROs. I think we've currently got SROs in the high schools and the middle schools.
Yes, sir.
And you talked about grant funding versus county funding savings. Are you saying that the state is providing grant funding for high school, middle and some elementary schools? And that's going to result in a savings to the school system based on current spending?
Yes, sir. So what the state did, the state has always allotted us oh sixty-nine or what they call at-risk funding. And so we have always taken the money or the cost for SROs out of that funding. Well, this year, the state says, we're going to specifically allocate fifty-eight thousand. Four hundred and fifty dollars for each high school and each LEA to help cover the cost of SROs.
That's not a grant.
No, sir.
That'll be recurring.
Yes, sir. That had, well, we hope. That had never been done before. And so that takes care of the high school piece. What we did was in June, we applied for the school safety SRO grant. And what we asked for was grant funding to cover eight elementary SROs. And six middle schools SROs. And so that's where the six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars came in.
So you, you're talking about well, elementary grant money and middle school grant money?
Yes, sir.
So that grant money would be gone in what period of time and then be back to oh sixty-nine?
It would be gone at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
So that's just a temporary.
Yes, sir.
Savings in oh sixty-nine.
Yes, sir.
You, you, you talked about the SROs, are they twelve-month employees or ten-month employees?
They are twelve-month employees, but they don't work necessarily twelve months with us. But we cover. They work ten, at the high school and middle school, they work the ten months that we're in school and then they work our summer school programs.
But they're working with the school system.
But it wants, the summer school program is over. So if we end summer school on July fifteenth. Then those officers go to their respective law enforcement agencies. But our school district covers the full cost of SROs.
So I'm trying to figure out in my mind, if you're, if you go back to your respective law enforcement agency. Then that at most is a two-month utilization of that person.
One month, two months. Yes, sir.
So I'm wondering. What, what are they, I, I just don't understand what they're doing for one or two months. It seems to me like you need them for one or two months, then you need them for eleven or twelve months.
There are also certifications and in-service training that they've got to keep up with to maintain their law.
So that's part of their training?
Yes, sir.
Or, or, so they're not actually in the general workforce on the street?
They may be, but for a very short period of time because, you know, for the other time, they're in the schools. So they've got to pick up their mandated training at other times. And that's the only time they have to get that training because. The SRO positioning of itself requires annual training.
So if I'm a regular officer on the Nash County Sheriff's Office, for example, when do I get my training? I'm a twelve-month employee.
Anytime during the year. So that you can, some of it is online, but it's still a mandated set of hours. So you can either get it on, in online, or you can go to a classroom setting and get into classroom setting at Nash, uh, Nash Community College or.
So the total cost of the SRO then would include full equipment?
We.
As anybody that was on the street for twelve months.
Yes, we pay for their benefits and what their total salary package. We have in the past, but if I'm correct. We did not pay for vehicles and fuel last year, did we?
So that sixty-eight doesn't include the cost of the vehicle, that's just salary and benefits?
Yes, sir. And, and to my recollection, we were not charged for vehicles or supplies. Or gas from either agency last school year.
Alright, you talked about the one per two elementary schools. Just as a, for example, in Red Oak, would Red Oak Middle and Red Oak Elementary be a better fit? One for two rather than taking that elementary SRO in Red Oak and maybe going to some other location away from that area?
So, so when we look at. Most often where school shootings have occurred. Most often it occurs in a middle or high school. There have been the exceptions where it's been an elementary school and that was an individual from the outside. But when you look at most school shootings, most of them are happening with an individual who attends or who did attend a middle. Or a high school. So we have, as we have done in the past, we have worked strategically to make sure. That middle and high schools were covered with a full-time SRO. And so our hopes here is that we will pair elementary schools based on location. So that there's an SRO who can easily travel between those two schools.
Well, I would just, you know, that's your call, not mine, but I would encourage you, if you're gonna do that, I think that's good. That's better than what we got now. But I wouldn't be so predictable to say, I'm gonna be at this elementary school in the morning.
Absolutely.
And this elementary school in the afternoon. I think I'd mix it up and that sort of thing.
Yes, sir.
Does, will Nash County Sheriff's Office provide a vehicle? And we replenish vehicles every year. So there's always a vehicle at every elementary school. Would somebody designated to move that vehicle around every day?
Now, that has not been a, a part of our conversations. What has been a part of the conversation is that the SRO would be in uniform and they would have a, a car.
I'm just saying the, the visible presence of a vehicle, I think, will help. And I know we replenish vehicles every year and they're, from appearance standpoint, they're. Regular vehicle, they just are high mileage. But if that vehicle is placed on campus in a conspicuous location. And moved around from time to time, it's not like you're just gonna set it on the street and I go by there every day and I say, wow, there's nobody in that vehicle. I come by here every day. So that's just a recommendation and every time with me, I make that recommendation. I think it'd be a good thing to do. Another thing you talked about, as law enforcement passes the school. Do they, as a routine, if I go by Winston Avenue, for example, if I'm a Rocky Mountain policeman. Or I go by one of the county elementary schools, I go by that school, Southern Nash Middle School. Do I just whip through there and go through that campus as I'm going by just to, for that presence?
It would be hard for me to say that that happens all the time.
I just think that would be a good thing if they could do that because that's very unpredictable when they're coming by there. And if I'm coming by there anyway and I'm just not going to an emergency, I'm just, I'm just looking a speed or whatever I'm looking. It wouldn't take but a minute or two to just ride through that campus and just, just a recommendation.
What I can say is that there, there's certainly times when officers are riding by schools and they stop in. But it is not something where we have spoken to either law enforcement agency and said. You know, can you make sure that, that this is happening? But certainly, when we come to the table, talk more about the. Elementary SROs, that this is something that we can talk about.
I think that's a good transition.
But I will tell you that the highway control in of itself does go through the. But I will tell you that um, the highway patrol in of itself does go through the campuses, even though it's the highway patrol, you don't. Really think that a highway patrol do something like that. They do. Um, matter of fact, when they go through, they're required to uh, give a particular kind of code so it's logged into the system. And you can get a copy of that log that show just how many troopers and how much time they're spending at the schools and you'd be surprised. You'd be surprised at the partnerships that are out there. You may not always see it, but that's the beauty of it. They're, they're there a lot. Uh, and that goes for the county, the city, any law enforcement.
I'm not being critical. I'm just saying, that is a presence and that's unpredictable presence. And I think it could have an impact.
Absolutely. And I would be remiss um, if I did not say that we have great um, partnerships with um, both Nash County Sheriff's Department. And Rock Mountain Police Department when um, we are in need of support and the help. Um, they have always been willing to, to step up um, and to help us. So we are grateful for the partnership that exists um, with our school district and those two agencies.
Also, um, our local police departments do a good job. We do have elementary schools that are in cities like Spring Hill, Middle Second Lady. They do an excellent job of going by and checking into schools, doing walkthroughs and they're unpredictable when they're gonna show up, but they usually do it every day. I'm used to.
I believe if we made that request, I believe you'd find the cooperation there to do it. I believe. The vehicle and the presence riding through.
We certainly will make mention of that. And thank you, Mr. Allen, for, for adding that because that is certainly true.
Other question from commissioner.
Do you have a system wide safety slogan?
Uh, system wide safety slogan? No, sir. We do not.
More added value is once set of law enforcement that uh, something I suggest one, see something, say something.
I like that. We do have um, a, the say something anonymous reporting system. Um, that again, that is a tool that um, was given to all schools by the state. Um, where students or parents can anonymously report um, anything that they see and our students do use it. Um, and so that, that is something that we have in place, but we do not have a slogan, but something else I will add to, to talk with our district safety team about.
And, and first that goes along with see something, say something might be in order for say something. Safety, it just goes a long ways, not just uh, security, uh, safety, incident.
Absolutely.
See something, say something.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I'd like to say good evening, everyone. I'm Tremaine McQueen, the executive director of technology. Here at the Nash County Public Schools and I'm here tonight to share a few successes. And uh, current conditions of our technology department. But before I begin, I would like to share some gratitude. With uh, my technology department. And if you look at the slide, this year and pre, and the previous year. We have had the best two years in a long time. Uh, we've, we were able to complete projects. We were awarded grants. We've been able to fully accommodate the district's technology needs without any financial limitations. So a, a few of the projects are listed here, if you can see, and I can't hardly see. All right, we got our one to one initiative and our refresh plan supports it. We got our ECF grants as well as student hotspots and our interactive board project. So let's talk a little bit about our refresh plan. So two years ago, we developed the refresh plan. And the goal of that plan was to place adequate devices in the hands of our staff and our students. So we are currently in the second year of that plan and it has been a, a, a success, I may, I may say. But to remind you what it looks like, if you look here, uh, yep, if you look here, our, our pre K through first grade. Will refresh their devices every four years. Those particular devices are grade specific and they will remain in those grades. Our students in our second, fifth and ninth grade will receive a new device annually. And we will keep tho, they will keep those devices for years. And we also have about nineteen hundred staff members. And we will refresh those devices, a quarter of their devices annually. And if you see there, the cost to maintain this refresh plan is one point eight million dollars. So we are currently utilizing the S R funds to support this plan. So let's talk about our grants. So we've done our due diligence uh, in regards to capitalizing on grant opportunities. The emergency connectivity funding is a one-time COVID relief federal grant. To help schools and libraries purchase devices and hotspots to support remote learning. So we, we were awarded one point eight million dollars of the ECF grant funding. Now, one point one million went towards student devices. A hundred and ninety three thousand went towards staff devices. Five hundred and fifteen thousand went towards twenty six hotspots with unlimited data. Okay, so the ECF grant allowed us to purchase hotspots. And all student devices in this year's refresh plan at no out of pocket cost to our district. And the only thing that we were responsible for with this uh, cost, without this cost was just the warranty for the devices because the grant wouldn't cover that. Moving on to our hotspots, now we are partners with T-Mobile. And we're also members of their ten million project. So this project offers our students free hotspots uh, with a hundred gigs of data per year. Now, although the gesture seems like it's really nice and a hundred gigs, it may seem like it's a lot, but in terms of students. Y'all have kids and great kids. Uh, if you give them a hotspot, they will eat that data. You know, they connect hot, they, they connect Xboxes, Playstations and whatever. So the ECF grant uh, that I spoke of previously uh, has helped to circumvent, to circumvent this. We utilize this grant to put unlimited data on the twenty six hundred hotspots. And it's broken out to thirteen hundred of those particular hotspots are currently in the hands of students right now. So we put those uh. Unlimited data on those devices. And we also have an additional thirteen hundred hotspots that are available for student use per their request. So if we move on to our interactive board project. Now, the goal of this project is to replace our old outdated boards and projectors. Uh, with new state of the art, new interactive panels called new line. So we will install a, a new panel in every class to improve the overall classroom experience. Now, we have successfully already, we have successfully installed six hundred and seventeen interactive panels throughout the district. Now, we've completed all the installations for our elementary schools and we're currently working on our secondary, which is our middle and high. So we hope to have this project completed prior to the uh, end of the school year. And another significant thing about our interactive panels, they did come with, well, I worked this plan out, that they came with seven. A seven year warranty, which is really good. So these particular devices or these uh, interactive boards should last us for more than ten years. And the one thing I want to point out, this project was also funded by S R. All right, looking ahead, most of the projects, most of the projects that I mentioned today are in some way connected to S R funding. So as S R funding is expiring, we need to secure a, a, a funding source to support this refresh plan. So as the, the technology director, it's my priority to make sure that students and staff have the, the latest and greatest. Updated devices and the best technologies. And so that they can do their work and also so that they can get the instruction that they need. Uh, that's all I have. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
How the teachers using this technology in their class?
From an academic standpoint, how are the teachers using this in class? Can one of you guys? Yes.
Also. Getting in touch with. Not only the teachers. Was how is that important to classrooms? We can see keep the students in the back with the technology as well. But they use them for things like um, for communities. They use them for things like small group instruction. They're used for um, group work and collaboration. Even though COVID, it caused quite a few hardships on us. What COVID also showed us is that we were underutilizing the technologies that we had now. Assessments, um. They're pretty much used in schools the same way that we use technology at the office. There's, there's not much that we use technology. That teachers and students don't understand.
Well, I was just wondering uh, technology being used in classrooms, it was relevant. Going to a class to learn how to use the technology. How academia. They use the technology in some places they are. So I was just wondering what Nash.
Other questions from commissioner.
When do the S R funds go away?
Oh, miss, I, I wish he was here. Well, there is the S R fund that is S R fund two. You want to talk about that? Go ahead.
One pile of money sunset.
Yes. Yes.
And there's another pile of money that we're spending that sunset September.
So what is that pot? What is the amount in that pot?
It's a lot. I know for my department.
You showed one point eight million up there. Is that the total of the two pots?
That's just.
No, it was, it was more than that.
But approximately. I would say over the twenty billion for, for whole pots.
How did you handle those pots before S?
We didn't have. We didn't, we didn't have it.
Okay, you just gave yourself an out then.
Yeah, we were from the students of the party that were um, allocated to us, but just like Mr.
Yes.
So you're saying there was a challenge coming.
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. Those were only four, you could only use them for four. And it's like criteria, four things, technology. Uh, uh, learning, catching up learning. There was P uh. So it, it was only limited where you could spend these funds.
So you got a couple of years to figure out how you do.
Well, I think we've spoken for most of the money that's being spent based on capital improvements and things that nature. Well, we got real lucky in this uh, Mr. McQueen's, right when they dropped, our technology was, we used it.
Yes, sir.
Way too long.
Other questions on this subject matter?
Let me just make a quick point on that too uh, with Mr. McQueen, this group, Mr. Diallo, that's a great question you asked. But one of the things that you find out across the state, again, I'm, I'm always looking at how Nash County. Compares across the state, even in this group. You look at weight, you look at Charlotte, we were on the leading edge when it came to one to one initiatives. There was a lot of districts that asked us, how are we able to do this? Mr. McQueen and his team started this thing probably about three or four years ago. And when laptops were hard to come through, they had negotiated with partnership with different industries and computer system groups. They're allowed us to be ahead of the curve when it came to this. So we've, you guys have been doing this for a minute now.
That's kind of where we want to start.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Main last question, do you enjoy what you do, sir?
I love what I do.
You show it.
Yes, thank you.
So as we talked about J R O T C is a topic that Mr. Sharp wanted to address, so give the floor here.
Before, before we jump to J R O T C, Mr. McQueen, real quick, I just want you guys to know that this has been a relatively difficult year for him. Um, his mom passed away as well as his mother-in-law within a week's span. And so he's been due diligence, just being in this process with it, staying with the system, what's going on. So I just really, we've been, have a lot of prayer for his family. But thank you for all your support and what you do, even in the midst of your uh, trying, trying times you had. So thank you. One of the things that um, that I want to talk about this, this year, do tomorrow, and I, I heard. Mr. Diallo, you came to see the superintendent regarding this as well with a couple of people. And I just wanted to make sure that we were all clear on what was going on with this process. This is not a Nash County Board of Education decision. It goes beyond us. Um, we found out about this probably Dr. Ellis, how long ago?
Well, we've been, September two thousand twenty one was one of the first retirements for J R O T C.
So one of the things that I asked the question, well, where, where are we going with this? So being a part of the Air Force family, I was able to get some inroads with some people um, in Alabama, the regional director for this. And he emailed me and says, Mr. Sharp, this is a problem. We're on a two-fold battle. There's legislation in the House in DC and there's legislation in the Senate in DC regarding this issue. The, the legislation in the House has pretty much have done there because they want to expand J R T C. The legislation in the Senate, it talks about who can teach J R O T C. If you cannot, this is, we're in good shape when it comes to that central because we have the naval group here, our junior O T C. And Rock Mountain High School, we have the Air Force, we're in good shape with that too, because we have two officers. In order to maintain a program, you gotta have two officers, one enlisted, one officer. If you don't have that, then your school's on probation. And you got a length of time before you can feel that. There's, there's three actual criterias. One of them being an officer and enlisted person. And you gotta have ten percent of your population, you gotta be in the program. So when I heard through that situation, I had got on the phone, I talked with um, uh, North Carolina School Board Association legal team says, hey. Who's in charge of this? So they, they directed me to three groups, three offices. Of course, two of them are being gone and there's Senator Burr and Butterfield and Senator Tillis. I was able to get into Senator Tillis' office, I think it was ten seventeen. I met with one of his staffers down in DC on tenth, ten seventeen, just to talk through this thing. We talked through it and what she told me was, Mr. Sharp, we got legislation in the House that's passing. But there's a lot of legislation in the Senate that we can't talk to right now because they haven't recessed. And so basically, the in um, that N D A act or the expense bill for that, it's probably about, I don't know, eight, ten inches thick. And I started going through that. There's nowhere in the world, I, I'm not smart enough to go through all that, try to find it. So what they're doing is looking at what we can do with five parts of that legislation that we can talk to our senators. I've asked Dr. Ellis to put together some information on our website that people can go to and write to their senators with the. that people can go to and write to their senators with the language that's needed to say, we want to continue to support. One of the things that we've asked to do, and I got this email back from Megan just the other day, she's out of Dr., out of Senator Tillis' office, this is what she said. She said, we're in recession, we'll return to session next week. At that time, the representative of both chambers of Congress will continue conferencing the N D A. The goal is to compromise between the House and the Senate version. Recognize regarding the changes that we talked about, because one of the things that we said, we need to be able to relax what requirements are to be able to be with the junior R O T C. So they're talking about trying to relax what requirements are. That's what they're negotiating. That's what they're going in chambers and conference when they got back to talk through. Of course, what we know is that's gonna take a while. So what we've also did, we've actually legislated up with our national school the State School Board Association with our legal team there to sort of get with the national group to sort of help all of school systems throughout the country push this agenda. So whatever, whoever's senator is on that committee, they can talk to them. What we would ask that you would do is that you would, and I know you will, because you're two hundred percent behind junior R O T C program in Nash County. Right now, we're gonna lose Southern Nash. And we're gonna lose Northern Nash. Both of those programs, we're, we're out, we're gonna lose them at the end of thirty-one May. Let's go here. You don't have instructor. In order to be, you gotta have two instructors from the military. One of them got an enlisted one.
I heard you say that, but, uh, isn't it, uh, military responsible for providing, they used to.
They still do. There's a list that they used to send us.
So it's just like teachers. The, the officers aren't required to come there, it's recruitment. It's just like, we can't find teachers. It's the same way with officers in the junior R O T C programs. So here's a caveat there, Doctor, Mr. Bedfordfield. I gave you the doctor right. According to the, according to the Air Force policy, in order for you to be a officer, you cannot have been out of the military no more than five to seven years. So if you're out that past, you, you're disqualified. And in the same token with the enlisted person, because there was a lot of folks that's in the V F W and other programs that could probably step in help with do this. But the way the policy is written for the United States Air Force, they can't do it. So that's the legislation that we're trying to change. It says, and then I'll finish reading this. The Senate is an annual of broadening the scopes of eligible instructors. So they're listening to that, but it's just a matter of pushing it through. So we gotta wait to see how that happens.
Putting, uh, young kids in, making a career.
So what you do, Mr. Bedfordfield, you contact your senator and you tell them that we need to be, talk through this bill. And so basically, so basically what we need to do is contact our senators. Until, and that's the twenty twenty-three, um, N D A bill. That's that bill. It's on the floor right now.
Well, we plan to do that individually or as a body?
Well, we're actually.
There are lots of bodies.
Right. So what we've done, uh, is actually have the state, because once we've formulate the level that should go out with that, we've actually pushed it up to the state legislature. So they're pushing out to the nation as far as the National School Board Association. So we're trying to unify this board itself to try to have a form letter to reach out to the people in certain.
Do we need a resolution or a form letter? Would a resolution be better to go to the state?
That's, that, that's great. So.
What, 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 what do we need to do?
We need, that's, if we could get put together a resolution stating that or, and that's a great.
Is that something that we could do, um, Mr. Chairman, with the Association of Commissioners across the state? Would they pick that up? I mean, this is an issue across.
That's right. So the, so the education, the North. Yeah, yeah, we're doing that already. So that's why I'm appealing to you guys, if you guys can do the same thing with the commissioners across the state. Because it's impacting, there are schools in all over the state that when I brought this up at the state law conference in Asheville about three weeks ago, there were Board of Education members that didn't know anything about.
Why couldn't we do a resolution and copy to counties, the other ninety-nine counties? Ask them to consider the same. And you do the same with the Board of Education.
We're doing, we, we're processing that right now as we speak. As a matter of fact, uh, Mr. Diallo, as I says, Dr. Ellis, I asked him to put together a place on the website so that people could go in the county or in our area and pull from that website and get that letter and send it out individually as well. So we want to flood them with any information. And it's critical, so their meeting sessions start on Jan., on November fourteenth. So they're gonna start caucusing, I think, the twenty-first, first of December, fourth, fifth of December, right around the first of December. So when they start caucusing that, one of the things I asked them to do, and that's what Megan's supposed to get back with me, who are the people that's on the committee? So you know, they're from different states. So what our folks will do is find out who those folks are in their state and sort of appeal to them directly. So if you guys could do the same thing from the, from the commissioner's side, that'd be great.
And the other schools.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Well, maybe we couldn't accomplish the same thing.
That's right.
We did a resolution and we just sent it to all the other captains.
Yeah, well, we, we can, and we can send, we can do a resolution and send it directly to to the Congress. Yeah, we can do a resolution, send it directly to Congress. We can do one that also send to their.
It's a, it's a very important program.
It is. At the rate we're going right now, we will, we will lose Northern Nash and we will lose Southern at the end of the school year. Right now, actually, it's a year, and I think Northern is further out than Southern, because we lost the officer earlier in the Southern law state.
And I'm an Air Force person too. So, but if you couldn't get Air Force, maybe you could be Navy.
Well, we got the Navy.
I know you got Navy, but you could have more Navy.
Right.
Something to expose those kids to what they get out of that program.
Here's.
Having a second Navy is better than having.
Here, here's a caveat there too, Mr. Diallo. With the Air Force, they do matching. With the fun, who paid, who paid for that outfit? The Air Force will match. Army don't. I don't know if the Navy does. So if they got a salary amount, the Air Force will match what it, they'll pay a certain percentage of that salary, M I P.
Again, we need instructors.
You said this came to you in September twenty twenty-one?
I'll read the, kind of, give you, from the school system, we've had two vacant positions for Southern Nash that opened up eight to nine months ago. They have not been filled. One officer retired, the other one transferred to Florida. So since seven to eight months of it being on the website for armed services, no one's glad. Um, and Northern, they had a retirement last year. And they have a possible transfer this year. Since they only have one instructor, they automatically go on probation. And they are down to seventy-five students, which Mr. Sharp said, you gotta have ten percent with me, they need a hundred, a hundred kids roughly. So both of those programs will be on probation at the end of May thirty-first, so.
Now, they, that will be eliminated. They're on probation currently.
I've taken my notes, Mr. Diallo, and we'll get together on that.
I just don't know what the requirements of those instructors. If you are a Legion member, you are a veteran. And I would assume a good number of those people would probably qualify if not for the out of the military for four or five years.
So I guess, Miss Diallo, what it's saying is, if you, if you've been out for five to seven years, you don't qualify. You got, yeah, you gotta be, and so that's the purpose of this, that's, that's right. And that's the purpose of what she says, they're amenable to what we recommend. So they just gotta go through that caucusing process with it. That's right. You're absolutely right. That, that's exactly, that's absolutely. So when we found out about twenty-first of this year, that's when we just thought, hey, this can't happen. We need to get this ball rolling.
Yes, as a, for instance, if you had two Legion or four Legion members that qualified as well, they were qualified just by simply they're veterans.
Right.
That were willing to teach the program, and all you needed was an exception for that title. What could we do to get an exception short term for the time?
Well, one of the things I asked Megan to do is she could talk to that group to give us an extension. So instead of being eliminated at the end of the school year, give it, as long as we see, we show some traction, and we got this thing going on now with the Senate hearing, give us some traction, give us some leeway. And they showed up at a board meeting or two as well, so.
What, what also would help is just a push within the military to make active duty personnel eligible to teach. Enlisted soldiers could get this as a duty station out of Seymour Johnson. So if we push that, that, they pay the, they're paying a hundred percent of their salary. But what it wouldn't do long-term is great.
That's right.
Have the military making a duty station.
And that's, and that's a.
And that's in the works.
Well, no, that's gotta go through legislation. They gotta, that's the amended part they gotta go through.
It's being discussed.
Yeah, you know how that goes. Yeah, I know, I, I know.
But, but just remember now, all those candidates have to go through R O T C first. It doesn't go through us. So all have to be approved. So that's, that's the concern I have.
There's certain ways that we could probably get some exceptions to be able to continue the program, to work through the, the, the bigger problems. And getting something through Congress.
But we just want to put that up there to appeal for your support. I appreciate what you guys are saying, what you can do to help out. But just continue to talk through it. And one of the things that we want to dispel this, this norm. This is not the school system cutting the program. This is not the school system cutting this program.
So the next com, uh, the next topic is gonna be the merger. For me, he left me on the slide, so. So Mr. Sharp is gonna speak to a slide, I believe, so.
But it's not a lot. Is there another piece there? There's not a lot to talk about. You guys know the storyline of this. Right now, as far as the timeline, what's gonna trigger this thing is actually Barack Isco County Commissioners had decided that they don't, when they stop paying that fund gap, and that's when it initiates the process, what's gonna happen. And they said that this is just, they say it again, there's no action on this. Um, that they're committed to paying the final physical cost up to twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. So, um, of course, you know, once they stop paying it, then that's the trigger. So we don't have anything to do. The Nash County Board of Education has nothing to do with anything else. But what I've asked Dr. Ellis to do over about a year ago, because we see it coming down the pipeline, the key thing is, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that my predecessor. I love a deal to God rest his soul in is keep the main thing, the main thing, and that's educating our children, all of them. So basically, what I've asked Dr. Ellis to do, to get with Dr. Beverly Bridges to look at talking about or initiate a conversation about the transition. I've also had a meeting with, uh, the Chair for the Edcoe Board of Education. We can't, there's not a lot we can talk about until we actually, the triggers pull. So basically, the trigger has not been pulled. Once the trigger is pulled, there's a list of things that's gonna happen that needs to happen. So it's gonna take up to two years. That's all I got to say to that one. And I can't, I don't have any answers to anybody else. You guys know it, you guys been working with Edcoe as much as anybody else. So I just want to bring this group up, says, hey, this is where we are. Once the trigger is pulled, Dr. Ellis has already met with Bridges, I think, once. And just started talking about some transition stuff. Um, we're trying to get ahead of the curve when it happens.
But we are ahead of the curve on some of these timeline things, right?
You, uh, and I hear you correctly. You said two years, that two years.
If you. Yeah. Well, ac- actually, basically, yeah.
Let, let me tell the commissioner side of this, uh, Kevin Shaw with the Ken.
Yes, sir.
You, you say until something happens, but our board and board commissioners, then it's gonna feel like something's already significantly happened. They have voted that they're gonna fund the schools through the end of this current year, which means it's gonna end in June. So when we go back to school next year, they're not gonna fund those kids to come to our school. And then that triggers what's in the general statute, which means they will get a free year in our school system. The board commissioners on the Nash side is gonna have to pick up. And then after that happens for one year, then it automatically, the kids will end up going back to Edcoe at the end of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. But to say we got to wait, I don't think we need to wait, because when they took that vote, the way I see it and talking with Chairman Edcoe County Commissioners, that started this process and we don't need to just have nine months to get ready. We need to be getting ready now, the way I see it. Because we're gonna have to fund as the Nash County Board, uh, what the difference is for next year already, we know that. And the general statute allows them to do that, and our board begged them to let's work together and not do it that way. But they chose to do it that way, so that's the hand we're dealt. So therefore, I think we need to be dealing with it immediately, quite frankly.
But not only that, you, you talked earlier about, uh, the capacity in the schools and maybe some potential re-districting. It seems to me like all this ties at the same time because you'll have a reorganization of your board, I believe, down to nine members. And you don't want to have six months to put that in place.
By reading the legislation, right, Mr. Diallo, that's not the case.
What if, what if the case, they might, am I misunderstanding that?
Yeah, because if you, if you read, and this is what I would say, go back and read the law on what the legislation pieces when it came to board members, I ask the same question. And I'll leave that to everybody in this room to go back and.
What is the latest legislation? Mr. Chairman, clarify that for me.
Legislation originally, uh, indicated in it that, uh, at the end of, uh, that one period that school board would then revert from eleven members to nine. Final piece of legislation did not state that.
So there's no definite timeframe for that to happen?
Uh, it, it is no definite timeframe. Therefore, that's why I feel we need to be working on it presently now. And, and of course, a sensible thing to do, and I'll say it, I don't mind saying it. Uh, since it will all be then Nash County school system, the school system, the school board should align itself with the Nash County Board of Commissioners and have seven districts. But at minimum, if you want to step it down from eleven to nine, uh, because you're gonna have a vast, uh, exit of, of territory area that some of your school board members currently serve, that won't be with us anymore. And of course, the statute requires for us to balance the school districts, and you're gonna lose quite a bit of that. So you're gonna have to reach district because you got to line yourself back up in accordance with statutes, which means each district has to be equal. And it won't be equal once you lose those students. So I just would ask you to look at, oh, go ahead and start the process and doing, doing your thinking and decide whether it's gonna be nine and then seven, or whether it's gonna be from eleven to seven.
So it.
Certainly, the goal is, I would think, of any logical body is to align it like it should be now that we can. Certainly, the goal is, I would think, of any logical body is to align it like it should be, now that we can do it with the Board of Commissioners, and use the same district.
So, yeah, so I, I would beggar that, the difference with that, 'cause basically, what I read inside the legislation, I was trying to pull it up, that it doesn't dictate how many board members you got, it just says they need to be in Nass County, they need to reside in Nass County.
But the school districts got to be in Nass County, and currently, it's not in Nass County.
Right, so what, what?
All your school board members residents in Nass County now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So that's why I'm saying with that legislation piece, you need to go back now.
So whether it's eleven or fifteen, or whatever it is, it's, they've already started that trip, and in July the first, they'll pull it, that's when it, that's when it'll start. So wouldn't we be wise to go ahead, regard, forget that number, eleven, I'm fine with eleven.
I, I, I understand.
Wouldn't we be wise to go ahead and be moving forward and have our blocks in place, so we're ready to do it when it's time to do it, rather than getting caught short?
I, I think that's a discussion that the Board will, the Board of Education will have together as a team to formulate when we wanna try to execute this process. 'Cause basically, if you look at, and I, I'm not here to have that discussion at this meeting, because this meeting is a joint for us to share where we, where we are. So this is a decision that the Board of Education for Nass will be making in conjunction as a team deciding, how are we gonna do this when it comes to the legislation and the law?
Is one day as I see it, it's just maybe to keep it from being such a burden, they not smart, a parent, they not smart to see it, but it ought to be a phase out.
Well, it. Mr. Bellville, I'm not sure what you mean by that, but it has been phased out.
Kids, it will be a phase out. I mean, that, that's what I would say.
So, so, so Ms. Allen, I'm sorry, Mr. Smith, go ahead.
If they start, you just said, then the Commission said they're gonna stop funding, but at the end of this fiscal year, school year?
In June, yes, sir.
And so then, looking at the legislation, who's gonna take care of those students that reside on the Edco County side of Rocky Mountain?
Edco is the parent to take those kids now.
That's why I'm saying, uh, yeah, yeah. He's a position to phase it out.
So he.
Rather than just seeing, all right, not funding them.
Here's how it reads, as you'll see, the major deadline for the submission for transfer agreement described below will occur until the fall of twenty twenty-three. And then after that, you got a hundred and twenty days after local government commissioners certifies that the payment has not been made to the Edco, by the Edco County Commissioners. So once it does that, the certification has to be done, is that, is that not right, Mr. Outlaw?
I'm Mr. Davis.
I'm sorry, Mr. Davis.
You can call me much worse than.
I'm sorry, Mr. Way.
It, it does say that, but the whole point of Chairman Shaw is, we know, we know it's coming.
You'll get me back on that one second.
I, I said, but the whole point is, we know it's coming. Why do we want to push ourselves up on a tight timeline? We need to be working right now to get this thing resolved, it's not gonna happen to a twenty-three, twenty-four, but we know it's gonna happen based on that vote. And I don't think that vote's gonna change as hard as they worked on it, 'cause I, I kinda watched through the process, but, uh, we just need to be ready for that. And if, if, sure, if you want to take your district in Nass and divide it up into eleven school districts, your board certainly got the right to do that.
Yes, ma'am.
One thing that I think we have done is proactive to move in that direction, even as it being the first step, is to align our superintendents to have a conversation with that superintendent, because the key is, as political as this whole issue's been for, as many years this has been political, it's about students. And we have capable superintendents that can communicate on a different level to look at curriculum, building, the whole gambit, and put it together and bring back information that's gonna be to the benefit of every student on both sides of this fence. So I think our first step has already been made, even though it's not officially a move, it's a good place to start until there are official movements happening on both sides. So that's just, I feel we are starting, it's not as visible as it needs to be, but it is starting.
And on the side of that, too, Doc, uh, Dr. Davis, it's basically not only our superintendents are being working in conjunction, but also our lawyers on the page of this as well.
This is, um, Chairman Davis, I was just gonna throw you one thing out that I noticed a few years ago that seemed to work really well between our relationship between commissioners and this board, was when we had a team set up for the building process for Redo. Would, would that be a good time to bring up a team process for this as well?
So let, let me address that question, that's.
I'd like to hear his.
Yes, Mr. Davis.
Let, but let me, let me just share this, 'cause basically, I, and the reason I'm saying this, uh, young man, is that basically, because basically, if we wanna do that, the Board of Education needs to sit down and, and work through that process. While I think it's great, while we put together a team or whatever, but the board has to decide that. I appreciate all the efforts that's going on, you're absolutely right, I think, I hear what Ms. Allen was saying, we need to start working this process, and we will start, we have started working it.
The item that I request, uh, Mr. Chairman, as you know, read exactly, or I say, I request, one of our commissioners asked us, therefore, it's on the list, so fifteen things that we gave y'all to look at. And it actually says, uh, Dean, when do we start, don't, don't start a don't committee to prepare the school system changes that will be coming forth, uh, with Edco County, due to recent action. That was the item that we, but on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
But after your question, I think that would be an excellent way to move forward, at the time that the school board is ready to do that, and hopefully, sooner than later.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Any other questions?
Are we at the end of your presentation?
Yes, sir.
Do you think we asked?
Yeah, I've got those.
If you would think that that would be great.
So those were, we have a few more questions, I was trying to mark off what we have already discussed. Oh, uh, what we had needed, okay, uh, did we, school bus drivers and solutions, I didn't hear that, but, um, Dr. Ferrer, can you kinda give us the status of transportation and solutions?
I think the question that came from a commissioner was, we saw the negativity, and the question is, is there anything the Board of Commissioners could do to help in that process? And let us know where you stand on that, I know you've got a committee working on it.
So right now, we, as a school district, uh, from the start of this school year to where we currently are, are down about twenty bus drivers. And what we have done throughout the process is, we have taken buses that did not have bus drivers, and we condensed them by putting those kids on other buses, which have made those routes longer. Uh, we already were having routes that were running around an hour, hour fifteen minutes, now we have some routes that are running up to an hour forty-five, almost two hours. Um, so, I, I wish I could tell you that it has, um, gotten better, um, it has not. Um, one of the things that we have been in conversation about is trying to come up with maybe some incentive pay, um, for drivers. Um, Ms. Wallace was speaking earlier about, uh, the payments, um, for our bus drivers. Last year, when we looked at the salaries of our bus drivers, and we looked at it between drivers who had one to ten years of experience, eleven to twenty years of experience, and then twenty-one plus. What we saw that in the surrounding areas, our bus drivers made more per hour than the drivers in those surrounding areas, those surrounding areas being, um, Halifax, um, Roanoke Rapids, Wilson, Edco. So when we look at those areas that's immediately around us, we are paying our drivers, or we're paying our drivers more than what the areas around us was paying. So then you go to the fifteen dollars per hour, um, but and help me with this, uh, Mr. Hill, Dr. Ellis, I think that people who were already making fifteen dollars per hour, were then given something around a four percent increase. Is that correct? So that still would put our drivers who were already making more than fifteen dollars an hour, still making more than what people around us are making. So to some degree, when we sit and we look at our situation, it's not just about pay, um, for, um, getting drivers. Um, if you're looking at, um, local companies who have trucking businesses, if you're looking at the local areas and their local transportation, they can't find drivers. And it's happening all over the country, it's not just here. Um, so the only thing that we can try and do in this situation is that when we have people who want to drive, to try to get them through the class as quickly as possible, to try to get them licensed as quickly as possible, and to try to get them on the road as quickly as possible, and to try to be the very best we can be to the drivers that we have, so they don't leave. Um, there are some things that, um, we have talked about, Dr. Ellis, I don't know if you want me to bring that up, um, in terms of conversations that we've had with the board um, about, um, some possible scenarios with some of our, um, teacher assistants, clerical staff, um, child nutrition, maintenance, um, in terms of trying to use them as drivers for their specific schools, putting some clear, um, lines and expectations in place so that uh, they don't feel like they're being abused or made to do something. But what it, what it boils down to, is my grandmother used to say, the X's and O's of this is, we can't fix this process without people. It is simply a people's issue. We don't have drivers, we can't get kids to and from school on time. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, so are you, are you saying that you all are not going to force child nutrition workers to drive? Are you giving teacher assistants and the child nutrition workers the option? Because I, I did have one come to me, and she did not want to drive, and she felt like she was being pressured to.
So I'm not saying that, um, we're not gonna force, and I hate to use the word force, because it wouldn't be forced, um, there was, if, if there was something that was put in place by the, by the Board of Education, it was certainly then becomes that person optional, whether they did or not. Um, but what we have said, um, to our Board of Education is to consider using those individuals to drive for their particular schools, and again, putting clear expectations in place on how those individuals will be used. When you look at Wilson County, they have those individuals drive, Edco, they have those individuals drive, Pitt County, they have those individuals to drive. And they still have problems finding drivers, but they're not having the issues that we're having. We have, we still have kids, in some instances, who are not getting to school till nine o'clock, and we have kids who are getting home at six-thirty. We have buses still on the road at seven o'clock coming from dropping kids off, it, it, it is an issue.
Well, I, and I understand the severity of it, but at the same time, if you had, if you're going to, and I know you don't like to use the word force, but insist that child nutrition workers or teacher assistants drive buses, suppose in turn, you lose a teacher assistant, you lose those child nutrition workers, then you're, you're almost back where you're starting from, and you have more positions to fill.
We're stuck between a rock and a hard place.
Yes, sir.
Um, and, and that's the only way I know to put it, uh, that I don't think that there's any great, um, resolution at this point. Um, but I'll go back to what I said, uh, a few seconds ago, it comes down to people, that's the issue, we don't have people.
Uh, are you, do you have it on your, are you recruiting, do you have it on your website?
We, we have recruited out.
The superintendent says is, if they were allowed to put it on a blimp, they would put it on a blimp. Which you get at.
Are willing to drive.
One thing.
Especially if they feel like the children on the bus are gonna be, well, just, on the ride.
Well, that's another, that's another nice meeting.
Thank you.
Let, let's just.
They were taken, but, uh, I think some of them are holding back, they don't want to do it, because they think children are gonna be rude. Yeah, I, I agree with that, so, if, if they, they don't know how to act on the bus, let the parent get them to school.
Let, let, let's remove this, this school board meeting, and with weird body guess, and, and I don't, I don't think, I'll admit it, I understand, sir, and I appreciate.
We have a question down here, Mr. Out.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna.
Mr. Davis, I'm sorry.
Mr. Arrington, just one second, I, I saw your hand go up, but what I want to say to our board is, I hope you take this well, but what I wanted to become involved in the process of then electing some, uh, position, I look very hard at the school board, I look very hard at the County Commissioners. I talked to my father about it, but my father was an eighth grade education, was a very smart man, and he simply looked at me, he said, what it boils down to is, you want to mess with a man's kids, or you want to mess with his money, that's the choice you got, and if we were commissioners, we decided to mess with the man's money, and we decided not to mess with it, man's kids. So let's, let's keep in mind that we furnish money, the school board does pretty much everything else, Mr. Arrington, I'll call on you for your question, sir.
My question is with the, uh, South people, you know, once they do eight hours, then you have to either start paying, continue to pay them at the same rate, or have to start paying overtime. Have to check the labor board to make sure that.
So if they go over their eight hours and they are hourly employees, they then go into overtime. Um, and we would be required at that point to pay them, um, overtime. And, and for us, again, I go back to, it's about, we don't have people, and so if we have people in place, and they go into an overtime situation, um, my own personal feelings is that we should be willing to pay the overtime, because what other choice do we have at this point?
You've heard before, Dr. Ferrer, but as long as we, uh, contacting the federal government about ROTC program, it would be nice if we could contact the federal government, maybe reducing the age of the CDL license to eighteen to seventeen, so we can train some of our high school students, if every high school, we find five students willing to drive a bus and go through the training and be responsible enough, that would be twenty-five bus drivers. We don't have any principal that old enough to remember how it was when kids could drive buses at sixteen, and sixteen, this day and time, is probably too young. But some of the best bus drivers, I used to be AP in charge of buses at Southern, some of our best bus drivers were high school kids. That might be something that, you know, the federal government's gonna have to change that law, because now at eighteen, by the time a kid is trained, they're graduated, and gone off, we can't use any.
That's one of your key goals, and one of the board's key goals.
So Dr. Ferrer, I thought you'd be able to give me some solutions, but I'm gonna mark that one off, but I do, thank you for giving us more pain, but I do know that we keep up with how many bus drivers are out every day, and I know probably last Thursday, well, a few weeks ago, me and Dr. Ferrer were doing bus duty, we had about thirty-some drivers out. And this is on the fly, so you've gotta redirect buses, you gotta push more on the road, you gotta get drivers to drive, and it just gives me a problem, so. I'll be glad to have committee on that. All right, so, uh, question number four says, Inglewood and Hubbard Playground Updates. Mr. Davis, can you tell us something about playground equipment or? Might want to stay up there, I have another question, too.
Real briefly, it, years ago, we had an account, a capital outlet account, probably twenty-three, twenty-four years ago, that did have, have money in it. Um, PTAs now raise money, you, you, you're looking, the Inglewood and Hubbard piece, I know the Inglewood piece that we removed, replacing that piece at ten, fifteen thousand, it's fifty, sixty, seventy thousand. replacing that piece at ten, fifteen thousand. It's fifty, sixty, seventy thousand for one piece. Uh, we do maintain the sand levels, the border. If we need to replace a slide, we try to order it if we can get our hands on it. But with a one-point-five million dollar capital budget and with the needs we're having and escalated cost with buildings and everything else to maintain them, uh, unless I'm charged otherwise, it 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 really hard to do the one-point-five million and do what we need to do from a needs from a facility standpoint, let alone uh, trying to buy playground equipment. And that's just the bare facts.
Mr. Chairman, what you say is they're put in and purchased by the PTA?
Y- years ago, a lot of what you're seeing now that's in native repair, a lot of this equipment is twenty-plus years old. Uh, you you know, when you go back twenty years, you you try to find one uh, who who you bought it from because nine times out of ten, the sticker's gone. Uh, and and then once you find what it is, trying to order a part, they may have to build. I mean, you you could be looking even on a piece of playground equipment, six months to get a part, and then you're going to pay twice what you should pay because they don't have it anymore. So it it's not really just a matter of that. It's a financial piece as well as, you know, the logistics of trying to get it. But but to me, the financial piece is more an issue than anything with what we're given. Yes, ma'am.
I know the equipment is very expensive because I looked it up, fifty-two, a hundred thousand, but my understanding is that Hubbard equipment needs to be removed before someone gets hurt. And so if if the equipment is that bad, could you at least remove it from the property?
We have, in 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 respect to the piece, from from what I'm understanding, we have boarded off one section. If I'm not mistaken, it's a busted slide. Either slide has been removed or it's been boarded off, and we are currently trying to find a replacement slide versus removing that entire piece. Uh, we do like to try to do that before we totally eradicate what is now fifty, sixty, seventy thousand dollar piece of equipment in be- because w- once you remove it, the PTA doesn't have the funds now to put it back. So if we can, you know, spend three, four, five on a slide, which this time of the year gets hectic to do, we do look into trying to repair before we eradicate.
But it is boarded, so.
Y- yes, ma'am. I I will confirm that tomorrow, but I do know we have had our, my folks out there to board it. Normally, we get it where they cannot go through it and use it. Now, I'm not telling you weekend play doesn't happen. That's what happens to a lot of our equipment, the weekend play, and we, you know, it's tough to to man that twenty-four hours.
Capital expenditures for the next five to ten years. Cause I know we presented something about two years ago concerning those.
The, are you basically asking about the CIP, what we're looking down the road or?
That's great. We just want to continue getting updates on that.
Sure.
We continue to update the counties and we certainly need to fit y'all's needs into what we want to do at the county so we'll know what an overall budget looks like. If nothing specific, just continue talking to us about your short term and long term.
Sure.
No more, no less.
I I I will tell you, just just off the cuff of my head, uh, Esrs has really got us in really good shape from mechanic stand, mechanical standpoint. Uh, we've hit, uh, the CIP probably on several of these through year seven and eight. Uh, I think some of our biggest expenditures you'll see coming up are are either new builds, renovations of older buildings where we've got new builds and left old portions of buildings. To to me, those are some of the biggest expenditures that we we need to be looking at long term.
Okay, so, uh, long range plans for vocational classes and possible diploma. In your packet, you're going to see mine is probably the black and white. You're going to see every program that we offer in the high schools. Looks like. Okay. Back section, you're going to see every program and it just talks about the credential CTE assessments and then the proof of learning, which means they can get certified in certain areas. I just want to make sure I leave you with this. This is everything we offer and, um, I think presently, we only, we only have one vacancy. I think it's carpentry in one of these. This is, um, this is a big list. And the other document I'm going to share with you is the focus we're putting now in elementary schools, middle school, high school, and post-secondary. We have a track now that we've started, starting in the elementary school. Uh, kids are taking surveys as to interest, what they're interested in when it comes to work, future plans, and we position that up when they offer in the middle school and it goes to the high schools. I just wanted to kind of leave that with you. Chad Thompson's not here, but we have something called Lunch and Learn that we started, gosh, I think it was this year, Mr. Daniel Smith, and we have one in December first. And we encourage you to attend because it really highlights our CTE programs, you know, for Nash County. So I really encourage you to attend some of those and we we can send you that date, but this is everything we offer presently in our high schools. Like. And I believe the last question, it says if possible, a review of latest test scores. Now, I'd be here two hours doing the latest test scores. I will share a document that I went over when we did the board retreat. Some of the highlights, I will say, well, I won't call this a highlight. I'll call it a low light, but, you know, two years of COVID, we definitely fell behind some. And we were already a low performing district. We are still presently a low performing district. But what I will say is, um, all K-two schools last year exceeded growth. We surpassed the state average. We have fourteen that met growth, eight that exceeded growth. All three eight schools, math, reading, and science, we improved except sixth grade reading. All EOC data improvement in high school with English, biology, math, and graduation rates was the only thing that we missed our target on. So in my opinion, I, we are growing and we're getting there. And in spite of COVID, we almost came out of low performance. I shared this with the board. I will send you the presentation so you can kind of look through it. And I encourage you, when we have those conversations, come and sit with us and we'll kind of explain some of this data and information for you. Okay? Thank you. I think that was my list. Go, go, go.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, let me just say I really appreciate your efforts and commissioners for being supportive in the things that we do. Dr. Ellis, you're definitely doing a phenomenal job. They continue to do extremely well with the resources. Again, I've highlighted a couple of things that we talked about that we're getting recognized across the state for leading training on various items. And we're really excited about that thing. One of the things that we would ask Mr. Bedford folks, if you know somebody who want to drive a bus, send them to us. We'll be more than happy to take names, right, Mr. Ferrer, Dr. Ferrer? More than happy to take names. Send them out. Um, so with that said, Mr. Outlaw, I appreciate the information regarding the junior JRTC program. Whatever you guys can do to help us out with that, that's great. I'll be, we'll be reconvening with our board to talk further along this emerging thing as far as the board. Find out what's the pleasure of board, how we plan on doing that because it's a decision that a member board makes. So with that said, um, uh, I, we don't have anything else, Dr. Ellis. Uh, there's also, we also do, uh, student advisory committee with students throughout the district. That, uh, Dr. Ellis, if you could talk to that real briefly. I I went to a few of those. I thought they were very encouraging. I would encourage uh, you guys, if you want to participate, be a part of it, to just sit in and listen to it. We would give you an open invitation to do that. Uh, because the more you know, more highlight, more information, the more in depth you are to talk about certain things.
So we started last year with teacher advisory council, student advisory council, parent advisory council, and administrator advisory council. And we just come up with topics that they want to talk about, promotion standards, retention, bus drivers. And, uh, we sit back and have dialogue with them. Uh, and Mr. Sharp is exactly right. You will learn more at a student advisory council.
That's right.
When you just ask. Uh, it's been real good because we're getting out there and boots on the ground. We're starting to learn some things and we've made a lot of policy changes based on some of these advisory councils. So encourage you, if you ever want it, I can send invites and all you have to do is zoom in, go from there.
Do the student advisory council. Yeah. You have a council. Get together, exchange ideas.
That's basically what we do. Exchange ideas. So with that said, you all enjoy.
What I have to do is actually during our meeting, because we won't be meeting again this month, but I I'd just like to say one thing, uh, about one of the questions, and that was the test scores and we had heard rumors that they were certainly looking to necessarily better. Uh, we hadn't had any official notification of that. We kind of would like to get that, what you're sending to us, so as it it affects the commissioner's job in so many ways as well, particularly as it relates to industrial improvement. Uh, we do ask questions upon time because we get a slight selection person here. They have already done their homework in our area. But if we had that data, we could share with them. It would be great to be able to do that and show we are in a positive direction. So if you could just keep us informed on what they are, but anything that school boards got going on is positive. If you were not just twice a year, share it with, to share it whenever it's available. We can help use that to do some of the other things that we did. But with that said, uh, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready, I will ask you. Yes, ma'am.
I just had one request of the school board, and that has to do with the agenda. If there's any way possible, you ought to get the agenda to us at least the Friday before to receive the agenda on the day of the meeting that morning. I I I really would like a concerted effort to get it to us before the day of the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anything else on board commissioners? Not entertain a motion for adjournment? Move back commissioner Outlaw, second back commissioner Wilkins or? Uh, any questions on the motion? All the favored motion, let's be known to say it, aye? Any votes by law?
I'd like to call for a motion for adjournment for the next kind of board of educations. I need a motion for adjournment. There's no proper move by Dr. Savis, second by Mr. Jenkins, question or discussions? You're in on all those in favor, say aye. You don't oppose? Ask, care it.